It's 2:01 PM on Wednesday, January 24, 2024. We are in the Mayor Bill Carpenter Executive Boardroom at Manning Tower, 45 Garden Road, First floor, Boston, Brockton, Mass., 02301. A notice has been posted at City Hall and also on our website. This is a public hearing and all are invited. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Chairman Timothy Sullivan, Commissioners Ernest Pettipet, Janet Trask, Cal Roberts, and Taylor Harris, I want to welcome you to this meeting of the Brockton Housing Authority. Please note that all Brockton Housing Authority meetings are recorded. I just wanted to announce that some of the members are present, myself and Cal Roberts. Some are on Zoom. Taylor. And we have Janet Trask is going to show up in a minute or two. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in special session on Wednesday, January 24, 2024, at 2:00 PM in the Mayor Bill Carpenter Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, 45 Garden Road, First floor, Brockton, Mass., 02301. I just wanted to read the Governor's memo. This is the COVID-19 memo that he put out. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public bodies are temporarily relieved from the open meeting laws requirements that meetings be held in public places open and physically accessible to the public. The longest measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. This was extended to April 1, 2021, extended again to April 1, 2022, extended again July 1, 2022, extended again July 15, 2022, extended again March 31, 2023 by Governor Baker, and extended again by March 31, to March 31, 2025 by Governor Haley. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda could make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting App in any app store or at www.zoom.us at 2:00 on January 24, 2024. Click on and join the meeting and enter ID number 893-5678-7188, passcode 709864, or use the link http://zoom.us/i/89356787188. You may also join by calling in the conference line at 1-646-558-8656 at 2:00 PM on January 24, 2024, and enter meeting ID number 893-56787188, passcode 709864, followed by the pound sign. The Board Chair will instruct participants on the appropriate time and manner for public comment during this meeting. We could please rise, if you can, from the Pledge of Allegiance and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to note that we have Janet Trask is here now. Can you hear us, Janet?
Yes.
We need a roll call for forum, which I'll do. Tim Sullivan, the chairman, is here. Ernest Pettipet is not here. Janet Trask.
Here.
Cal Roberts, the treasurer. Taylor Harris, the Assistant Treasurer.
Here.
Well, we're going right straight to item two, Tom. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 28, 2023, item A in the package.
Now, members of the board, I've had the opportunity to review the minutes. They were quite lengthy. It was a long meeting. I found them to be in order, and I recommend that they be approved as written.
So moved.
Second.
Janet, was that you second?
No, it was Taylor, I believe.
Sorry. Is that returned up?
It cannot. I spoke to Owen about that today. We're going to upgrade this thing. The reason it's not, it's coming out of that camera right there.
The sound?
The sound, yes. It's not coming through the television. But you can hear us fine, though, correct?
Yes, I can.
Yeah. I apologize.
It's just coming so soft, Taylor, we could barely hear it.
If I scream, is that better?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 28, 2023 as written. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Just so you know, we have, we're going to do all our items by a roll call because we have people on Zoom and present. Roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Trask.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes. Motion carries. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak before the Board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with name, address, and contact number before the start of the meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The Board will take any issue under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for the hearing of visitors will be limited to 15 minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing your three minutes to another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Are there any hearing of visitors? Don't be assigned then.
No one assigned here, Mr. Chairman.
We have no hearing of visitors. Item four. Correspondence.
Mr. Chairman, there is no correspondence. If I could explain to Commissioner Harris why we have it on the agenda with nothing there. It is part of the Board's bylaws that will be included at every meeting, so therefore, even when we don't have correspondence, it's listed on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item five. Approval of the bills for the special meeting of January 24, 2024, Exhibit B in the package. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes, I have run over the bills with Mr. Tivo. There were a couple of questions that have been answered, and I have approved, make a motion to accept the bills as they are.
We need a second.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the bills for the special meeting of January 24, 2024 as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item six.
Yes, item six. Unfortunately, this gentleman, Mr. Owens, who was excited about starting work a month ago, has withdrawn his application. The employment world is still a little different than it was five years ago. But so therefore, we will withdraw this from that.
Item six has been withdrawn. Item seven, appointment of maintenance mechanic aid, Exhibit D in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Pluck to speak on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tivo, members of the Board. In last October, we advertised on Indeed and the Mass Narrow website and our website for helping the Maintenance Department of Maintenance Mechanic Aid. We had a number of resumes come through. I do initial screening of the resumes and then send lightly candidates down to Mr. De Christopher to see who we wants to interview. We discuss it. We interviewed a number of candidates. After the interviews, we brought back one gentleman for a second interview, Mr. Dixon, to do a second interview and to do hands-on test and a written test. He passed both the hands-on test and the written test with flying colors. As you can see from his resume, he has years of experience doing multifamily apartment maintenance in Boston for the Wynn Company and others. He lives here in Brockton. He also passed his physical, and he provided me with references, who spoke very highly of his work ethic. So Mr. Dixon is here today, and I'd ask the Board to consider him.
I would like to just mention, I did have an opportunity to speak with Philip. He was self-employed, which tells you a lot, Mr. Chairman, you've been self-employed. So you know who gets you out of bed in the morning and gets you going, and you're your own boss. He understands that. He did fabulously well on the written test. It's a difficult test, and he knows, he knows his stuff. Lives in my old neighborhood. We spoke about the old neighborhood at times, and he also informed me that when he takes vacations, he leaves the country, so don't call him. But when I asked him, when I speak to the people, I talk to them about, you know, how important it is to show up to work. I don't care if you're the best at what you do, if you don't show up to work, you're not helping us out. And Mr. Dixon assured me, and I assured that he will be a very steady worker, very well-grounded, nice family, that he's working with daughter in college now, very good with the WPI.
We need a motion and a second. Item seven.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to appoint Philip Dixon of Brockton Mass. to the position of Maintenance Mechanic Aid effective January 29, 2024, at the step, at the 2023 Step One rate of 3244 per hour. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tivo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Could you come up here, please? Usually, we introduce you to the Board, and we will, if you could.
We got two here, two up on the screen. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
And we have Commissioner Trask on the left and the right, and Mr. Harris. Okay, I have to back up a little for him to see you. Now you're in, now you're in screen.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Mr. Dixon. Nice to meet you.
Phil, that's our camera, right there.
It does, it captures the Board members. So congratulations.
Phil, before you leave, we at the Board put our tenet number one, and we know that anybody can have a bad day, come to you with a, like a crazy idea or something. Just accept it. Give them the time of day, walk away. Our feeling is, without the tenants, we don't need you, but they don't need me. We're going to work together. Welcome aboard. It's been, well, since 2020 COVID, we haven't had people come in. We, all of us were on the screen. Glad to meet you. Thank you.
It's just that, it's added an addendum. Philip and I spoke in a previous job working for Wynn. He worked in some family developments and took pride in advising the young men sometimes going in the wrong direction on what they should be doing and acted as a method to them. So he is, again, he's a broad person.
Phil, is that the casino one?
No.
Just checking.
Mr. Chairman, if I can take him over to the.
You always do it.
See you next week.
Item eight. Review of financial comparatives, Exhibit E in your package, Mr. People.
So I know Ms. Holland always loved doing this. I don't know if she's going to give it up to Mr. Pacius or not.
Oh, no. This will be your last call.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before you, you have the financial comparatives through the month of November. Again, the purpose of reviewing this on a monthly basis is to assure the Housing Authority that we are remaining in line with the budget and the approved budget that we are awarded to purchase from. And it's a good, it's a good time for the Authority to really take a deep dive, just to see, make sure that we're running on surpluses. If there is a deficit, that we do have a plan to make sure that that's going to be okay. And again, just to remain transparent with the Authority of where we stand. So through the month of November, for the Central Office Call Center, the cost imperatives reflect a surplus in the amount of $911,330. Affordable housing reflects a surplus in the amount of $279,438. AMP 1 reflects a surplus, the amount of $1,010,500. And AMP 2, which we have been showing, there's been a little bit of fluctuation in that account, currently has a deficit of $389,093. However, this was to be expected, and we are fully aware and keeping track of this deficit.
If I can speak on, because we usually don't have this, but the Board did approve actually a deficit of $2,704,000 in spending on the Campello project. At this time, we should have been $2,479,000 based upon your approval deficit.
Yeah.
So we're at 389, which is a deficit. We're spending our savings on that project, but that Board, in December of 2022, you approved a budget with a big line on the spend on Campello. So it is unusual. We usually hit our numbers pretty good or have it, but this is the time we've saved for years to, to address the issues that we have.
Tom, is that on the, the new construction of Campello?
It's on the, so right now, it's being spent on architects, engineers, and charmit design. We'll be talking a little more about charmit design, who are doing all the. Yes, exactly. That then come free.
Not that free.
No, you're absolutely right.
The Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program is currently operating on a surplus in the amount of $296,155. The state program reflects a surplus in the amount of $75,002. 6891 and 6892, the 6891 properties reflecting a deficit in the amount of $5,803, and a deficit also in the amount of $1,055 for 6891. Again, I do anticipate these being made whole as we do start to receive rent from the tenants. So I do not think this is being an issue at this time as well.
In the, in Weena Martin Homes, we have not raised their rent in 20 years because they were a nonprofit charity that came in and took it up, and they were struggling at the beginning. We have gone up on their rent, so we will zero this out as we move along.
115 Bel Air Street, the building behind.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the Department of Mental Health. We have asked them, and the state won't allow it, we've asked them for about $3,000 a month for rent. They're paying us about $2,700 a month, 26 something. So we'll keep banging on that door. In fact, do you have a meeting set up with them yet?
Hasn't been finalized yet.
Benny and Dennis will meet with the Department of Mental Health, and at that point, we'll be asking for additional income. They're a little bit more restrained by the state.
And the RBP program is currently operating on surplus in the amount of $60,112.
Make the end with surplus?
Yes.
Nice job. We need a motion and a second. Item nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to accept the financial comparative for the period ending November 30, 2023, and put on file. Any more questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries. Nice job. Thank you. There was a couple of deficits, but they're small. Item nine. Award of Fiscal Audit Services Contract, Exhibit F in your package.
This is, I think, one of the most important things, other than hiring an executive director that the Board does. Auditors, this audit, we hire this audit, it's required by federal law, and they come in and go through our programs and books, and they make sure we're doing things in accordance with the contracts that we've signed. So they go, the first thing they ask for is the Board minutes. They want to see what you have approved to happen. They then come in and they look at what we're doing and see, are we doing what the Board approved? If you're not, then there's a problem there. They also go through and make sure that we're not spending money inappropriately, spending it from one fund into another fund. They make sure we're calculating rents the correct way, that we're not charging people too much or too little. This is where you want to hear bad news from these people. If, we don't want to hear bad news, but this is why you hire them. They work for you. You tell them, go in and make sure everything is right, and that's what they do. We advertised this in December, sent it out to several firms. We had two very, very competent firms respond. One, Rector and Reader, who we've dealt with for years, and another one, CFA, I believe it was, I'm not that familiar with them, but they're a new, they're a large corporation that is working now in the housing authority sphere. Myself, Mr. Pacius, and Mr. Pluck reviewed the proposals. As I said, they were two significant companies. In the end, we rated Rector and Reader higher than we did the second firm. We then opened up the fees to see who would be the least expensive, and Rector and Reader was significantly less expensive. So we're very happy with their services. They know housing authorities well. They travel around the country. Dale Rector, the principal, shows up. He answers my phone calls, which is good. He teaches housing authorities around the country. He trains CFOs on how to run housing authorities, so he's very good at what he's been doing. So I can recommend him highly, but I can tell you, he will not, he's not asked to give a pass to anything we do. He comes in and does a thorough audit, him and his staff, to make sure that we're doing things in accordance with the law and in accordance with the Board's direction. So I would recommend that we authorize, that we award the contract to Rector and Reader for a three-year contract with two one-year options with the approval of the Board. Must have said Siri. Two, two options, one-year options with the approval of the Board.
Let me ask a question for Rector. You have 2023 to 27, the fees are staying the same?
Yes.
Across.
Yes.
Gotcha, because I'm looking at the other guy, and I'm like.
The other people escalated quite a bit.
Yeah.
Rector and Reader knows us. They know what they're coming into. They know, they're always, they've been very complimentary to us. In fact, last year, they came in, and we were, you know, going through things, and they said to us, you know, we've been all over the country. Agencies have been negatively affected by COVID. You guys are doing great. And I would have said, oh, my God, you don't know how hot it is.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Yeah, because I noticed the AUP go up, it's the fees rise.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
We need a motion and a second. Item nine.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion to authorize the executive director to enter into a contract with Rector, Reader, and Lockton PC of Loganville, Georgia, for the annual audits for the Brockton Housing Authority federally aided programs and state aided programs for a three-year, for three single-year audits for fiscal years ending December 31, 2023, December 31, 2024, and December 31, 2025, and an option for the fourth and fifth year, December 31, 2026, December 31, 2027, pending approval from the Board Commissioners. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 10. Approval of contract extension, on-call electrical services, Exhibit G in your package, Mr. People.
If I could ask Mr. De Christopher to speak on this, please?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I would like to request your approval for the extension of the on-call electrical contract, Stalman Electric, of Brockton and RJL Electric of East Bridgewater. The current contract with the company is expired back in November 2023, was fully executed with the approval of this Board, signed by Mr. Tivo on December 10, 2020. The companies indicated their interest in the contract extension with the VHA by maintaining prices, terms, and conditions the same as the 2020 contract. The contract extensions for the company's benefits to VHA in a number of ways. The companies have been working with VHA for many years, is familiar with the electrical systems throughout all our properties where they have been performed work in the past. There's no learning curve by the company's personnel and by the VHA staff. Therefore, repairs and maintenance assistance take place with greater efficiency and lower disturbance. This contract extension guarantees the VHA continuation of a fixed price set three years ago and continue within two more years. In essence, the VHA will be paying for the service at the same rate as 2020, thus beating inflation escalation for a total of five years. I recommend that a motion be made to extend the on-call electrical service contract with Stalman Electric of Brockton and RJ Electric of East Bridgewater for two more years, beginning January 20, January 2024 and ending January 2026, to the same terms and conditions of the December 10, 2020 contract.
I would also like to add, both these companies are very responsive. Stalman has tremendous amounts of capacity, but we had the electrical issues. When we had the uh electrical issues down in Campello in December, they had multiple men, uh, somewhere between five and ten uh people at the site for two days immediately. They were there immediately.
Um, I don't, I would ask.
Yes, so that, I I think I said they saved, I'll be a little, they saved our butts. They they really were, and they came in, they know our places and uh um, and uh, although uh, R J L is a smaller operation, he's very responsive. He solved the problem at this front door the other day that went on for days and days and days. And now we called him and then he he took care of it immediately.
I was just wondering, any, do they have trouble getting by?
No.
Either one of them?
No.
I know it's big, I see the property.
He has a warehouse, he has a challenge to that.
I'll go, I'll go one to, if we had to get new stuff, that would be okay. Repair stuff, he's all right. New stuff, Chris, a year, a year on new stuff?
But with, I haven't had that issue. Chris probably has. I haven't with them, so.
We need a motion and a second, item ten.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion to extend the on-call electrical services contract with Stalman Electric of Brockton and R J L Electric of East Bridgewater for two more years, beginning January twenty-fourth, January twenty-twenty-fourth, and ending January twenty-twenty-sixth, for the same terms and conditions of the December tenth, twenty twenty contract. Any questions or discussion on the motion? I just wanted to say it's a nice job to get the same price again four years ago.
Yeah.
There you have it.
Roll call, Mr. Kibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries. Item eleven, approval of addendum to contract, on-call plumbing services, Exhibit Eight in your packet, Mr. Kibo.
If I could ask Mister DeChristopher to speak on this also.
I would like to request your approval for the uh, for an addendum to the current plumbing contract extension with Robert Irvine and Sons, which is approved by the Board of Commissioners at January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, four billion. They are requesting that the hourly rate be increased to the current prevailing wage rate. This is a rate that the state requires contracts to pay plumbers, and I believe that it's in the best interest of the housing authority to work with the company, pay this amount. The company's been working with the V H A for many years. They are very professional and responsive. They have the capacity to handle all the major plumbing and heating issues that are arising more frequently throughout our developments. I recommend a motion be made to approve an addendum, an addendum to the current plumbing contract with Robert Irvine and Sons and increase the hourly rates to the current prevailing wage rates dated one ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
If I could just add to this, so we do have a contract at a certain hourly rate.
Yeah.
And we could say that's what you've had the contract for. We also have an obligation as a public agency to pay prevailing wage. So if we say no to them, then they have to break the law, and then we have to fine them for breaking the law. Uh, so it really is a a situation where, well, two regulations are coming together here and and conflicting. And the one that uh has to be trumped is we get, we can't take the money out of the pocket of the workers. Um, it would be a violation and we'd shut the jobs out.
You don't want that?
No, no.
And if, so if the Stalman, they have the uh, the staff and capacity and they're very responsible, that's all we're passing, believing, things that are coming up.
Yeah, the 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 second uh plumber that we pay gets about twenty, twenty-three dollars more. No, nineteen dollars an hour more, so they're still getting.
We need a motion and a second, item eleven.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion to approve an addendum to the current plumbing contract with Robert Irvine and Sons to increase the hourly rates to the current prevailing wage rate dated January ninth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries. Thank you. Item twelve. Approval of change order number one. Exploratory work, Campello High Rise, Section eighteen project, Exhibit I in your packet, Mr. Kibo.
If I could ask Mister Barry to speak on this, please?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Um, during the our design feasibility study in the development phase of Campello High Rise, we're running into unknowns, uh, issues of uh dollar values, um, mainly with the um, the abatement for the spray-on fire improvement and the uh, any of the asbestos in the units themselves compared on the floor and the walls and such. Um, it it kept the number up around, I believe it was around twenty million for the two demolition, uh, the abatement and de- uh demolition of the two buildings. Um, we, we directed, we asked, actually asked for a change or proposal from Shawman's um construction for this work to be done. They came back at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which we thought was very unacceptable. Uh, we had then directed them to proceed on a uh ti- on a time and material basis. Um. With that being said, again, they they did the abatement of two dev- and two, two units. We would uh, we would recommend to accept change order one in the amount of fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents from Shawman Design and Construction of five, five hundred and sixty Harrison Ave, Boston, Mass., oh-two-one-one-eight for the exploratory work at Campello High Rise, Section eighteen project.
If I could put this in a bigger context, so we need to, we're going to be taking these two buildings down. The demolition of the two buildings is relatively inexpensive. Uh, millions of dollars, but relatively inexpensive. The vast majority of cost is abatement. It's taking the stuff down, bagging it up, shipping it out to Ohio. That's what happens across the street here. For 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 months, we saw them digging up dirt, putting in these large trucks with bags around them, and they drive it to Ohio. We will have to do the same thing. So what we are doing here is getting the specifications so that when we go out to bid and we say to the demolition companies and the abatement companies, this is what you need to do to comply with the environmental law. Uh, that that's what this is about.
This is being done for, because the buildings are being taken down?
Yes. They're trying to put, uh, this is all part of the estimate, which is part of the feasibility and the uh design development. We obviously, we can't go forward without a budget that we can afford. And there's a big dollar value involved with the abatement and and the demo. I, it it dropped it down, uh, I believe at least.
Nine million dollars.
Yeah, was it total of nine?
Twenty to eleven million dollars.
So, um, by knowing what's there, if they don't know what's there, they're gonna put this price in there and it's gonna, it's just gonna be excessive.
So what are they worried about? The dust blowing around with?
Correct. So behind the, this, whether or not one of the other issues was the spray-on insulation, was that hot? Wh- which is, I mean, does it have asbestos in it?
Yeah.
Uh, that was a big unknown. And the problem with that, it's just, you know, is it behind the beams and in between the panels on the outside? If it is, then when they take the panels off, is it gonna blow out into the area? So that's the big unknown. If it shows that it's negative and it blows around, it doesn't matter. It's just whether or not it's, it has asbestos, so.
So most change orders of these things come up because of unknowns. This money was to explore it, so we know what we're doing.
What happens in Ohio?
There's a big hole. They keep filling it. Cause for the past twenty-three years, twenty-four years, everything is asbestos, goes up there.
Uh, that's, that's where it goes. They they drive it out in trucks.
Yeah.
If they were leaving here from Brockton and driving to uh Ohio, dumping it, and then driving back to get another load.
Yeah.
I mean, I have one question. Um, on the fees, which is two point two five percent. Where is that based off? The fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-one? Cause the, the fee to one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars?
You're looking at sec page two, where it says exploratory, uh?
I'm looking at the Shawman. Yeah.
This one?
Yeah, the third page, yeah, the Shawman.
Shawman, no, below, two, uh.
Yeah, where they said, the additional service one.
Yeah.
Exploratory.
Correct. So that was over two, I can't hold.
The at two point two five percent, twelve hundred and forty-seven dollars.
It's based off the fifty-four thousand, six hundred?
It would be based off of the, no, no, it wouldn't be the fifty-sixth, cause that's the total.
No, the fifty-four.
Fifty-four, yeah. Be based on the fifty-fourth.
So in government work, uh, we require them to uh break down their their bids.
Yeah.
So they have to tell us how much profit they're gonna make. Um, in private sector, they just say it's gonna cost you ten thousand dollars. They don't tell you what it is. In the public sector, they have to break it down. We will not allow profit over fifteen percent, Chris. Is it fifteen?
Correct.
Um, in this fee, they're, they have to tell us exactly what it is.
Yeah, but if you calculate the fifty-four, six, ninety-one point thirty-five
Yep.
times two point two five, it's not twelve forty-seven, it's twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty-seven?
Yeah. One thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-five cents.
There we go. So why don't we uh tell Shawman that they're not getting that that money, the ten dollars. I think it's ten, right? You said it was different?
Yes.
That might have just been a typo, typographical error, but you're very good to look at it. Five, four, six, nine, one.
Five, two.
Point three five, nine, point zero.
Okay.
Two, two, five.
So did you add the one?
Twelve hundred thirty dollars, fifty-five cents.
Did you add the two, fifty-four, six, nine ones, right?
Yeah.
I don't know, one, point three five plus.
That's some work in finance, too.
Does it include the seven thirty-eight?
Oh, the seven thirty-eight, it's great. That came off fine. I don't like busting bubbles, but I'm.
It's the um, it's the, the general uh G L at one point three five.
That's right.
Fifty-four, six, nine, one, and then four, one, two.
Seven thirty-eight, thirty-three is correct.
So if you add July to August, the fifty-four, plus the general liability, seven thirty-eight, it ends up being the twelve forty-seven seventeen.
Okay.
Should it include that?
Yeah, yeah.
Should it include, so should the fee be based upon the G L two?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, it's based upon the G L two? Okay.
Keep that, Carol.
Carol, you're sharp.
All, it's not a bad thing.
Nice job, Carol.
Yeah.
And Ohio doesn't mind this?
Huh?
Ohio doesn't mind this?
No, they love it. They're making the money.
They're making the money. So we want to make sure that we're paying them the right, nobody's um, doing a little extra here. It's just the way I am.
The fifty-six thousand, that that includes the trucking.
That's everything.
So, okay, so.
We need a motion and a second, item twelve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion to approve change order number one in the amount of fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents for the contract with Shawman Design and Construction of Boston, Mass. for the exploratory work at Campello High Rise, Section eighteen project. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes, God bless Ohio.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries. Item thirteen. Approval of addendum, addendum number one, contract for pre-construction services, Campello High Rise, Section eighteen project, Exhibit J in your packet, Kibo.
If I could ask Mister, um, Barry to speak on this, please?
Okay. Um, and with the change of the comprehensive uh monetization for the Campello High Rise buildings to new construction, the pre-construction phase has obviously tr- uh changed dramatically. We're basically into a two construction phase, pre-construction phase, I could say. Uh, Shawman Design, Design and Construction, uh, the authorities, the C M A are at risk, uh, this contract has formed, uh, pre-construction services as, as per their seven twenty-seven, twenty-two uh request for proposal. Uh, their, their pre-construction was scheduled from uh August two thousand twenty-two to August two thousand twenty-three. As part of the Shawman RFP, a fixed fee uh is attached to it at twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seven a month uh for additional pre-construction services. Due to the completion of the uh, the initial pre-construction phase, the authority has worked with uh Shawman to, to begin discussion with, based on multiple phases of construction, covering a construction duration of forty months with a start date of January of two thousand twenty-five and completion of two thousand twenty-eight. Shawman and and the authority have come to a fall on extended, extent, extend to the pre-construction services per the RFP monthly amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars for one year period at a not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. And will bill hourly against the monthly fee. The authority believes that this is the best interest of the authority. This allows the authority to shut down the project as needed during the funding period and not incur pre-construction costs. Motion, we would recommend a motion to approve addendum number one to Shawman Construction, uh, Design and Construction for one year of additional pre-construction services with not, a not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars for the Campello High Rise, um, Section eight project.
We need a motion and a second, item thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve addendum number one to the contract with Shawman Design and Construction for one year of additional pre-construction services with a not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars for the Campello High Rise, Section eighteen project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Kibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
You're on, Commissioner Trask. You don't have to turn it off.
Um. I thought I said yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item fourteen. Approval of change order number one and change order number two, electric heating up to, upgrade, Bel Air Tower, Project twenty-four dash ten, Exhibit K in your packet, Mr. Kibo.
If I could speak on this, so you have a very detailed outline of where we are on this by Mister Barry. And this is go, this is what the auditors will look at and see the very specific reasons why this is happening. This really goes uh hand in hand with what we just did on the contract for asbestos. We said, we really want to see what's happening there. So when we go in, we don't get any surprises. This is completely different. We went in blind because it was the heating systems at Bel Air, and we had three fires in about a month. And we said, we need to act on this now. And Vinny, though he's not here, we did it through our operating fund. We said, start replacing them. Get the electricians here, Stalman. Get the electricians here and get these things that are causing fires out of these apartments as quick as possible. In the meantime, Chris is doing his environmental, he has to get, he has to do an environmental review. He goes through a process and he gets the money and he, he puts it out. But we were doing it without the, the months and months and months we would do of investigation because of it. So although this is additional money for um the building, it, it would have been something that we would have seen upfront if we did all of our usual due, due diligence. But because it was between taking a long time and leaving the people at risk of of fire or immediately addressing, uh, with that, if you want to.
Yeah, I was, I was basically, I jumped into, um, when we ended up on site, um, the contractor, the re- When we ended up on site, the contractor to replace the identified heat on the Bel Air began to find that the information that we had received was not correct. Capital improvements had, capital improvements directed them forward on a survey for all the units on a time and material, so we knew where we were actually standing on. With the completion of the heat survey, Hub Electric determined that there were additional one hundred and forty-two, two thousand watt heaters units needed to be replaced. The reason for these replacement ranged from too large of heating units to too small of heating units. Heating units missing, not identified, heating units not working or burnt out. Additionally, there was, there are a hundred and sixty single pole thermostats needed to be replaced with double pole thermostats to properly control all the heating units. Change order one covers proposed change order number two of eighty-two man-hours, which equals about twenty minutes a unit to perform the existence condition survey. And proposed change order number three, the purchase of the hundred and seventy dual pole, a double pole, sorry, unit thermostats to control both thermostats in the living room and bedrooms of eighty corner units and nineteen tamper resistant common area thermostats. We'd also change order number two, which covers proposed change order number four, the substitution of two hundred and seventy-seven watt heaters for one hundred and twenty and two hundred and eight volt heaters on the tenth floor. And proposed change order number five, to supply and install one hundred and forty-two additional two thousand watt heating units with associated components. We would recommend to award contract, sorry, we recommend award change order number one and number two to Hub Electric in the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents with eleven calendar day time extension, no cost time extension. And change order number two, in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, fifty-one cents with a hundred and twenty-three no cost calendar day time extension, respectively, at twenty-four dash ten, Bel Air High Rise Electric Heating Project.
Chris, has this solved the problem of this, no more fires?
Correct. Well, again, this ended up saying, replacing all of the heating units we weren't originally, we're doing it with certain areas and then we end up, we're there, we found the issue. So all the electric heat in the building will be replaced. All the electric heat also gets fuses put in them, so they can't.
This won't happen again.
Oh, the heat.
So they're going to be blowing the fuses as opposed to shorting out.
They're actually heated?
Yeah.
The other heaters, by the way, were beautiful. They really were. They lasted for fifty years.
Yeah.
They just started to break down on a regular basis and, as Chris said, shorting out instead of a fuse blowing, shorting out and causing fires.
Yeah.
We need a motion and a second, item fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Give it to Janet.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve change order number one in the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents with an eleven calendar day time extension and change order number two in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-one cents with a hundred and twenty-three calendar day time extension to the contract with Hub Electric Incorporated for the electric heating upgrades at Bel Air Tower, Project Twenty-four dash ten. Any questions or discussions for the motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Item fifteen. Executive Director's Report, Exhibit L in your package.
Before I go into what the written report is, I just want to thank the board members who attended and all four of you did the Martin Luther King Breakfast in Mansfield. As you know, this is one of my favorite events of the year and it did not disappoint, again, the community coming together and celebrating the diversity of the city and hopefully progress, hopefully progress. But we have to keep going in that direction. The next meeting, I want to make sure everybody knows, we're going to be doing it on February twenty-eighth. It's a Wednesday, and the reason we're doing it that later is because we have to close our books. And the state needs your signature on certain things for some reason by the end of February. It makes no sense, but they do need it by the end of February. So our accountants have asked that we delay the meeting so that they can do the right thing and have good books that you're certifying to. So we will be moving in that direction. There's one other thing I'll mention at the end. I want to talk a little bit about the Campello High Rise. We submitted out three funding applications in November. We expected them to go in front of the Mass Development Board in November. They delayed because they were receiving so many applications. We thought they would go in December. They delayed. We thought we were going in January. They delayed. We have now been told that they are the Department of, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the Executive Officer of Administration and Finance through the Governor's Office is working to strategize on how to deal with all these applications. I spoke to Mass Development yesterday or the day before. The good news is we're with eleven other entities. He was quite confident we'd go in March. But that doesn't mean, we're in line now. We're waiting for money. They have about two hundred and twenty million dollars in tax credits. We're asking for forty million of it in our first bite. Then we're asking for forty more, then forty more, which will go along. We, Mr. Pluff and I have met with Councilor Nacastro, and we've asked her to champion this in the city. We've asked her to make sure the mayor is aware of this. I have a meeting with the mayor next Friday, the twenty-ninth, I believe. Twenty-ninth, we'll be speaking to him and letting them know how important this is that at any given time, we could lose a hundred ninety-eight units if one building had to be evacuated. We did sandbagged the back of the B Building. Water in that storm a couple of weeks ago came up and almost came to flood stages. It is sandbagged now. But we have other facilities and major component issues at the building that I'm worried about. We have met with Senator Brady, who was fabulous. He met with us and then spent an hour in our parking lot calling around the state to let them know how important our project is. We have met with Representative Dubois, who has also been very good. She will work with Senator Brady. We are meeting with Representative Cassidy next Tuesday, next Tuesday. I am reaching out to Representative Mendez. But what we need is, since everybody's looking for this money, we need advocacy to say, remember Brockton's here. And you may lose a hundred ninety-eight units if nothing happens. That would be horrible. So it's a dire situation. We're not doing this for Cathy Towers. We're not doing it for Sullivan Towers. They don't need it. We're not just looking to make this nice little place. It's going to be nice. We're looking to save four hundred units of deeply affordable housing, and they need to know that that will go away someday in the near future if we don't move on it. So that's where we are. I spoke to, I wanted to bring up a name that was mentioned the other day, Robert Jenkins, who works for Mass Development. He has been advocating internally, you know, make sure you remember Brockton. Dottie Pugenerity, who worked for the Old Colony Planning Council, who now works for Mass Development. I spoke to her the other day. She said, we're all excited about your project. I'll believe how excited they are when the papers come through and we sign them for the funds. But I do want to make sure that you understand, we are out in the public. We are meeting with these public officials. We are asking for them to advocate in the state. We're a gateway city. Send some of that Boston money to Brockton. So that's what we're looking for. And that's what I wanted to talk to you about, Commissioner Harris, a little more about. So that's where we are. I have my fingers crossed. It will happen. I want it sooner than later. We're looking for official action status. Once that board takes that vote, our expenses associated with this can be paid for through the financing. If we don't get official access, that's just all money out of our pocket. So we want to get that sooner than later.
Have you been in touch with the Congress? Have they been through the same thing?
Yes, oh, yes.
Nothing to do with it?
Oh, it's always, there's always twists and turns. This is a big twist. We expected to have them voted in November. We expected them, so it would be an official access. We didn't know how much people were going to be asking for. We knew because prices were going up and that the governor, for good reason, is pushing housing, housing, housing. A lot of people are going to be coming in. But we did it, and we're lucky. We got in. Joe Rivers, who works for Mass Development, he's the Vice President of Investment. He said, look, you're in. There's eleven people in with you. They're looking, they perhaps, this is not, they may close the door. But we're in. We're on the other side of the door. We just want to now be in front of the door that lets you into the financing. And we'll do so. I'll be, you know, I'll be updating the board on this. If you're talking to elected officials who have, you know, they're working with the state, let them know. Remember Brockton. Remember, we have this large project in the Campello section. It's very important. It's also very important to the future of public housing in Brockton. And I'll go into that a little more. I'll provide you with some information on that for the next meeting.
Great. And Michael Patisis has proven himself once again, we see.
What was that, Janet?
Michael Patisis has proven himself once again. He's doing his due diligence back here in Brockton.
Be afraid. I don't know if you covered the self-help building.
I did not speak of the self-help building. The self-help building is still housing self-help. I have not spoken to Jonathan Carlson yet. We have no need or want for them to move out of it, especially this time of year, which we had told them a long time ago. So we're working with them. They do, they will be moving to the Avon, just on Main Street, just where the old McCormick Insurance Building was, right? They have, but they've done their building over there. That's where they plan on moving. But they're still at thirteen sixty-two.
I just wanted to point out that what I read, their attorney has been in Massachusetts.
Their attorney's being an attorney. And so it makes nothing easy.
He's hellishly representing his client.
Yeah, at eight hundred fifty dollars an hour. So I'm trying to tell Jonathan, why are we spending eight hundred fifty dollars an hour to have these two people go back there when we can talk for free? So that's my personal opinion.
Okay. We need a motion and a second, item fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to accept the executive corrections report for January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just, I'm excited to read that we have five more VASH vouchers and that we're the best program in the New England region for the VASH program.
That is exciting. Tom and Chris and the staff in the Rental Assistance Department have done a fabulous job with that program. Because these veterans aren't always, it's just not finance, right? It's the disabilities related to the war that they're coming back with and that they're dealing with. So it really is a fabulous program.
Right.
We've seen some long-term tendencies too, which is the problem. If they're having issues that cause homelessness, they get a home and they become homeless again. That's what we want to start.
Well, good job.
Any other questions or discussions? Item fifteen. Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries. Item sixteen, old business. Any old business? Hearing none. Item seventeen, new business. I just have two items. The, as you all know, the regular meeting should have been tomorrow. But I'm having surgery tomorrow, so I can't make it, so they moved it up a day. And next month, I'll be away on vacation, but I'm going to come in, I'll be in by coming in on Zoom. You'll be here by yourself, Carol. Any other items on new business?
I have one other item, Mr. Chairman. If I could ask the board, and you don't have to take action today, but we are planning for our annual meeting in June. We do recognize a Person of the Year, and in the past, the board has had a subcommittee that they've put together to choose that. So you could think about that. I would like to move forward.
What did we do for a subcommittee last year?
Carol and Commissioner Trask and Commissioner Roberts were the subcommittee. And we met and they reviewed the candidates and they selected at that time Mr. Martin.
Carol, would you have time to do that?
Sure.
You have about, there's about five months left?
Yeah, well, we have to get it done before we, we probably have three months.
Three months.
Sure. And we want, we want Taylor's advice too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the board would be Janet Trask, Taylor Harris, and Carol Roberts, the three is?
Yeah. Three women.
Three good women.
Three good women, yes.
Knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Just to let the Taylors know, what usually happens is I write up some nominees and I write why we think they should be. In the past, we've met for lunch, so we get lunch out of it. Yeah, it would have to be a posted meeting if we have three people. And we would meet and discuss it and then a vote is taken and we go for that.
Okay, it's better if it's posted for something like this.
Yes, yeah. It does, it does need to be posted if we have three people.
Yeah. But just so it's transparent.
Any other items? Item seventeen, new business?
No.
Nope.
Hope things go well for you tomorrow, Tim.
Yes, good luck.
I'm sure they will. I'm not worried. Don't leave yet. We need a motion and a second. We're going to do a roll call on item eighteen, your adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to adjourn. Roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, meeting adjourned.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Enjoy the nice sunshiny weather.